Yep, good to go?
Yes.
All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the September 13th meeting of the Barrington Select Board. Roll call please.
Uh, Dan and Andrew.
And that's free screen.
Jim Sikosha, 21 James Free Drive.
And Andrew Knapp, 96 Lindsey Point Road. May I have everyone please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for, looking for a review and approval of the agenda as written. Select person air.
I would still like to have discussion about the rep.
Good. Okay. Is there a specific agenda item or you just listen to add it?
Well Connor wants to take it off, I'd like to discuss.
I was, uh, agenda item 10C was to discuss recreation events with alcohol on town property. And at the request of the Recreation Director, I should like to put that request on hold for the moment. May come back before the board, but asking to take.
I don't know if there is a specific event.
Well, they're changing the video a bit and stuff.
I talked to him briefly before and it can remain on the agenda. I know his point.
Okay, so.
We'll leave it on the agenda.
Yep. So it's staying on the agenda, so the agenda is unchanged. For the agenda that I have.
I support it.
Okay, anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the September 13th to, uh, 2021 agenda as amended.
Second. Roll call.
Aye, aye.
Rick aye.
Sikosha.
Matt aye. First item on the agenda is the issuance of a building permit on Union Lake Road, which is a class six road for Jason and Lee Price, map 113 lot 40. Discussion, select person air.
Um, I read. The roads, the fire code and stuff.
Right.
I really, I did a lot of work on the fire code and stuff. And the highway department goes by a different set of rules in the fire code and stuff. So I feel it should be fire chief addressing because it changes the questions. Should be going to the fire chief, not the road agent. But I go down the road and stuff, but I think comments should be, he agreed with the road agent and stuff. But anything to do with fire, it should be addressed to the.
Mm-hmm. I don't disagree with you on that.
So that's why I don't like the word of the write-up.
Mm-hmm. Does it ultimately achieve the same purpose in its current state?
Um. Well, it's under review and stuff and my understanding of it has a lot of homework on it and stuff. So any questions? Is it, we could do, we'd bounce them back and forth and stuff, that's what I'm saying.
My, my general sense is that the highway supervisor is really just recognizing the standard there and the fire chief is acknowledging that. But I believe any questions would be directed to the fire chief on that.
Thank you.
It says here in one of the emails from Rick. According to the new fire code, because this is an existing building with only modifications to the existing space, no new construction. There is no code requirements to review in accordance with the private road agreement. I support the road agent's recommendations. Thanks, Rick. So I don't think we was too bad of a deal, right?
Well.
Or did he, did he have, is there like another thing that?
So then, um, to address your issue kind of tied with Dan's. Mark addresses it that the road is the resident, that the property is considerably less than 20 feet in width required by fire code. And he specifies ways in which the road could be upgraded, but the fire chief in this instance is not recommending an upgrade to the road. However, the highway superintendent or supervisor is, or road agent is in this case. So I think that needs to be sorted out.
Mr. Chair.
Select man, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. I just was gonna bring some clarity because it is confusing. And we're instituting some process improvements to take some of the confusion out. Mark, the road agent submitted his comments. They, each department had submitted their comments independently. And so Mark submitted his comments before Rick had submitted comments. What's happened in the past is Mark has let folks know, let property owners know what it would take to bring it to the town standard in the classics and private road agreement, which sometimes is different than what's required by the fire code. So then there, those residents are surprised when they hear from the fire chief that there's different requirements that they have to follow. So Mark, in an effort to kind of bring as much clarity as possible, said, hey, the fire code might apply. And that's why he included that in his comments. Rick made it clear that as an accessory dwelling unit, no fire code, fire access is required by fire code. And so the road agent's recommendations are strictly what's included in my town administrator report, which is any damage to the road as a result of construction should be corrected upon completion of construction. And so the planning board was a little bit confused also, so I talked with the road agent and the fire chief specifically before tonight's meeting to make sure.
Yeah, select person Mantra.
Every.
Did I say this correctly, that actually our fire code doesn't beat the state's fire code as far as class six?
That's, that's what they're trying to sort out. So one of the conflicting components is, and this was a conversation I was having with Rick, is that they're trying to figure out how do they, the, the state fire code is saying that there has to be a 20-foot travel way, but there have got to be alternative means to meet it because there, there's a whole lot of property that has always been, been valued as a buildable lot that now necessarily would, you would have to have a way around. Some of that is submitting an appeal to the state fire marshal saying, hey, here's what we've done to make up for, is this an acceptable pass around? But we're waiting for Rick for some feedback on that from the state fire marshal's office. In this case being it's already in an existing building and they're just looking at adding an ADU. It doesn't necessarily mean that anything has to change, it doesn't change the, the road or the road is not a consideration, so to speak, in the upgrading process of this.
Right, so the town's classics and private road agreement still applies. It applies to accessory dwelling units, just like, and, and so Mark looked at the road from the lens of the requirements of the classics and private road agreement. The road's in decent shape. And so Rick looked at the fire code, but Mr. Mancheck, to your point, the state, the state legislature adopts the fire code, adopts the building code. And traditionally in New Hampshire, for both building code and fire code, likely other codes, but those I'm closely familiar with, the state lags with the national code. So I believe, Jimmy, you might know, I think we just adopted 2015 building code or 2018.
I don't know if Barrington just did.
Well, the state, the, our, in Barrington, we adopt whatever the state, the latest the state has approved. And that's been practice for.
State, I believe, is still on 15.
Yep, and so for fire code, how it relates to fire code is the language for fire access in the fire code is more flexible with the latest code than the code that's currently adopted at the state level, which Barrington has. So the, it's unclear when the new fire code will be adopted, hopefully soon, and that will add that flexibility. And until then, like Chair Nat mentioned, we've gotten some additional clarity from the fire marshal's office, how to navigate new construction on classics or private roads that are substandard per the letter of the code current. Nuanced situation for sure.
Thank you.
Select person Sikosha.
I didn't see, I mean, reading through, the guy's doing some, some upgrades to accommodate his mother. You know, I feel as long as he, you know, maybe does what the road agent suggests, so if need be, the boys can get down there safe and sound.
So regrading the road after completion of the project.
I'm unclear, are we going to bring it to a 20-foot roadway or just?
No, grade what, grade what we have. Select person.
I drove down this weekend for the first time.
Doing okay?
It's close to my house, I walk it. It's, it's always been a fairly well. I mean, you know, in the spring, like any dirt road, it gets rutted, it gets potholed up, but it doesn't rot terribly, so they take good care of it.
Well, hey, a little extra care on it won't hurt.
So. Okay, are there any other questions from the board? All right, I'll close our, our general conversation in open public comment.
So if you're participating virtually, you can raise your hand on the Teams platform, or if you're participating on the phone, you can press star six to unmute yourself and speak up. This public comment is strictly to the topic of the issuance of a building permit on Union Lake Road for Jason and Leah Price, map 113 lot 40. See, one hand up from Aubrey Mead. When you're ready, Mr. Chair.
I'm ready.
You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there, yeah, this is Aubrey Mead with Marie Mead. We're at 87 Union Lake Road and we have no objection to this application or Jason creating this apartment.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
I don't see anything else coming through on mine, Mr. Chair.
All right, with no further public comment, I'll close the public comment section. Looking for a motion for the issuance of a building permit for Jason and Leah Price, map 113 lot 40.
I will make that motion as long as we can add that they graded road.
And advise them to join the road association.
Correct.
To be clear, those are the conditions listed as one and two on the agenda item. Yep, perfect, thank you.
Seconded by select person air, roll call vote.
Aye, aye.
Mantra.
Sikosha.
Matt aye. Congratulations to Jason and Leah and the acquisition of an in-law apartment for their mother. Consent agenda. Looking for a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 13th, 2021 consent agenda A through E as presented.
One item to note is with, in reference to the consent agenda in E, it looks like there should also be a letter F because we, E is motion to authorize the issuance of eviction notice and collector, collector, collector's deed of August 26, 2021, fiscal year 2022, and then it jumps right into highway safety grant acceptance.
Yep, so that was, that's a formatting error, I apologize. There is only E, that's connected to the, the eviction notices are connected to item D. So item E would start at the FY 2022 highway safety grant acceptance. My apologies.
I saw that and just wanted to, I wasn't sure if it was an added item there or if you intentionally had separated the eviction notices from software.
Nope, and that formatting nuance continues down to the appointments. So you'll see the motion for, relative to that grant acceptance.
Yep.
Listed at six all the way through to appointments.
Yep.
Which would really be six, so my apologies, thanks for pointing that out. But it would still be the consent agenda A through E.
Good. Do you have a second? Second. The only thing I'll note on it, just so everyone's aware, is that that I would be abstaining from the meeting minutes since I wasn't here for the last meeting.
Great.
Roll call vote.
Aye, aye.
Mantra aye.
Sikosha.
I with the noted exception. Appointments, Stratford Regional Planning Commission, Steve Diamond is up for reappointment with a term through July 1st, 2025.
And so this is just before you, for discussion, per the town's, the select board's appointments to board's procedure. This is recommended by the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. And so happy to answer any questions or bring it back before the board on the 27th for a vote.
Um, the only thing, the only way in I would have, and I, I apologize because I wasn't at the last planning board meeting, was if they had discussed it at the planning board meeting.
I was at that meeting and they did not discuss it at the planning board meeting.
Okay, I would assume it should be reviewed there to see if they're in agreement with that since he is representing our planning board through the regional planning commission.
Yeah, we had a conversation with the chair, but I can recommend to go before the entire board, that's appropriate, we have time.
Okay, and the, the chair, I'm assuming, is in agreement with that?
With the appointment, yes, yes.
A general sense of, if he's in agreement, I would assume it had been discussed, but as you're saying, it wasn't discussed with the board, so.
No, but the time it works out, that's something that can easily be accomplished before the September 27th meeting.
All right, thank you. Does everyone agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, continue this item.
Yep, so continued. Till 27th?
Yeah, that's the plan anyways, just discussion, the first review, and then vote the second review. So, and part of the purpose, just to speak to that new procedure that board adopted, part of the purpose is for this exact reason. So when things come up, we have time to get answers, additional information, and get it out before the community a couple of times before appointments are made.
Very good. First of two public comments. So I will open the floor for public comment.
Again, if you're participating virtually, you're welcome to raise your hand, put a comment in the chat box. If you're participating on the phone, you can press star six to unmute yourself. I'm not seeing anything coming on mine, Mr. Chair.
Give it just a minute longer.
Sure thing.
All remains quiet. All right, we've given it a few minutes, so I will close the first of two public comments at this time. What's that? Yes.
So we'll call the virtual participants, the Western friend.
Or the calm before the storm, I don't know which here. Staff reports, Administrator McIver.
Thank you, here we are, the first meeting in September, so I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize our September work anniversaries. Again, these are folks that started in the town throughout the month of September and some long-tenured folks here at the beginning, starting off with Timothy Booty in the fire department for 27 years, John Janelle also in the fire department for 26 years, Amy English, who was formerly the library director, still works in the library as the interlibrary loan librarian, was hard in town 25 years ago, Dana Drake in the highway department 21 years ago, Barbara Irvine is our land use administrative assistant, has worked in town for 18 years, James Sanger, Jim in the transfer station, transfer station attendant, has worked for town for six years, John Thomas Harmon, JT Harmon in the fire department for four years, and Sarah Bailey, who started as the first program coordinator in the recreation department, now the assistant director in the recreation department, has worked for the town for two years. The second item, you remember at the last meeting that we talked about the recreation slides, we put them out to bid, nobody bid on them. We saw an ad online that scam info stratum was looking for slides, match made in heaven, perfect. Well, it turns out they, they fell out of interest in the slides. And so the Recreation Director and I, in an effort to get these slides to a new home where, where they're not in the way over there anymore and properly disposed of, started talking to organizations in the community that might be interested. And one of the first was Barrington Village School, which is where they ultimately ended up. So for your information to circle back to the disposal of those slides, which we literally couldn't give away, so that's the update, that's all I have, thank you.
Happy to see that they're going to a good home.
Select person air, is it in it?
Select personnel.
And my, uh, one of the others, the roof funded, rep asked me to go in and come through instead.
Always a good use, will you bring the truck too? Very good. All righty. Old business.
Town owned land.
Oh, I'm sorry, I am skipping office admin, municipal office administrator Cottle, who is quietly sitting down there on the end.
And you'll notice this is for next week's meeting or two weeks, the next meeting, you have your budget binders, which we finished compiling today. But mostly for Mr. Bailey, because he complains every single week here about how his office is. Open up the inside of your purse jacket, Tiffany supplied everybody with magnifying glasses to make sure and quell any complaints you might have about font size, so.
I apologize to taxpayers on that one.
The ants aren't gonna make it and Rick's next forest fire is right here.
Terrible, thank you.
All right. Old business, town-owned land sale update, Connor, would you like to?
Yeah, so you'll remember at the July 26th meeting, the select board authorized supporting the town lands committee recommendations. All of that information's on the town's website at barrington.nh.gov/2021sale.
And lots.
Yes, and on August 12th, letters were sent to each eligible abutter, asking them if they were interested in purchasing at the full amount owed or the assessed value, whichever was less, asked to respond by August 27th. We received three letters, we received two letters for map 227 lot 30, which is the lot on Parker Mountain Road. The total amount was 158,200. So we received a letter from Wayne and Allison Noyes, who have owned property at 220, map 227 lot 27, and Hillary Bedford Parkhurst who owns property at map 216 lot 38, that's the abutting property. So following the recommendations, we sent out letters on September 2nd, asking for a sealed bid process between the two bidders, asking for the highest bid with $158,200 minimum, so we have those bids. For you to open now, and the idea is that the select board, if you're willing, will select the purchaser at tonight's meeting, assuming high bidder, but that's the board's discretion. And the, the town would continue to work with who was selected as the purchaser through the purchasing process with the closing hopefully in November, December. And I would ask if the select board, while they award it, if the sale falls through with the identified purchaser.
Goes to the second.
Just to keep things moving along.
Select person air.
And Tiffany notified the town lands board, so they were in the loop too.
Very good. Let's see what we got. The first one that I opened is from Hillary Parkhurst with a purchase price of $172,050.
I'm gonna go with you.
Everybody go.
Yep. And the next one from Wayne Noyes is offering a bid in the amount of $193,000, to the above reference property. And that would make Wayne Noyes the high bidder. Select person. Tax map.
Tax map 220. 30 you said?
227 lot 30.
To the, to Wayne and Allison Noyes for the sum of.
193,000?
$193,000.
Okay, and should that fall through?
If it should fall through, Hillary Parkhurst will be the.
Would first. Would the sale for the second highest bidder?
Would the sale for the second highest bidder?
Very good, I have a first and a second, roll call vote.
Aye, aye.
Sikosha.
Matt aye.
Great, so the next one that we received, a letter of interest in, we just received from one abutter, which was for map 248 lot 3. This is a landlocked piece of property off Young Road, the total amount owed's 49,500. And so we received one letter from Cindy Lee, map 116 lot 21, is the abutting property. So it would ask the select board to consider authorizing staff to proceed with the sale process with Cindy Lee for map 248 lot 3 for $49,500.
Selection.
Yes, actually, the town lands and conservation will support it.
I would like to make a motion to identify Cindy Lee as the purchaser for map 248 lot 3 for $49,500 and authorize the staff to proceed with the sale process.
Second. It, just for clarity here, I have, oh, okay, that's her lot versus the lot for sale.
Yes.
I'm gonna clear now. Okay, so I have a, I have a first from select person Sikosha, a second from select person Mancheck. Roll call vote.
Aye, aye.
Mantra.
Sikosha.
Matt aye. And I see the hand raised for the bidders on the prior property.
Hillary Parkhurst, would you like to hear from her?
Yep. That is the rest of the board, do they have agreement with it?
Ms. Parkhurst, if you just unmute yourself, we should be able to hear you.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity. I always just encourage you to look at the details of the offers. Did they require deposits, were there any inspections or anything that had to be foregone, or how quickly they can close? Because that does make a difference in value in terms of how quickly the town can get the money they need. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
So the, for the remaining properties that the select board authorized, the, the offer of to abutters, the town didn't receive any letters. We sent follow-up letters on September 2nd, asking any abutter if they're, what, to make an offer, make the town an offer to acquire the property. And so those were due today by noon. So as indicated, we opened those at one at the town hall, we only received one. But the, we expected we would receive multiple, and so we're going to be prepared. But we only received one letter and it was from Linda Brushett and James Corfren. They own property at, uh, I don't know if their lot, they owned, they were interested in the two lots on Flower Drive, map 111, lots 10 and 11. They own a tree farm, which is a lot of the vacant property adjacent to the end of Flower Drive, which is where this is. So they offered a price of $1,000 each for both lots. And so I had an opportunity to talk with the chair of the lands committee, which him and I are both in agreement that we recommend that the select board accept that offer of $1,000 per lot. Reason being, these are, based on the lands committee's work, these are unproductive lots, they're not buildable lots. The Linda Brushett and James Corfren are known in that area for the conservation of the property. The Linda Brushett and James Corcoran are known in that area for the conservation of the property that they have. Uh, and so the requirement of purchasing these lots is that they be merged with the abutting property. And, uh, Mr. Lindsay, Chair of the Lands Committee, felt that that met the recommendations of the Town Lands Committee for that destination of the lots. So if the select board's interested, it'd be asking in a, a motion and a vote to identify Linda Brushett and James Corcoran as the purchasers of maps 111 lot 10 and 111 lot 11, um, for the purchase price of a thousand dollars each and allow staff, authorize staff to proceed with the sale process.
Discussion board.
Town lands, I agree with everything Connor says. We did a lot of work on that and stuff. And then the first bidder, the public bidder that.
Are you referring to the, um, the Parker Mountain Road property? Any other discussion about the two lots on Flower Drive?
Makes sense to me. They're not productive and we're just hanging on to them and somebody wants to give us some money for them and then we get the tax on top of it.
Is that, is that property, is their property in current use?
Yes. And they indicate in their offer that they would intend to add it to the current use, um, which, you know, speak to the, to the conservation of the area certified tree farm, so.
Those drive the taxable, taxable value of the lot stem.
Make a motion.
Okay. Second. So I have a mo- a motion and a second to, for the sale or how do you feel on it?
It was totally reviewed by the Lands Committee and stuff. Everything Connor stated is true.
I don't love it, to be honest, but.
It's interesting. The lots have some historical significance also. So it's, um, the part of the property, um, served as a, a historical dam, which is part of what makes them unproductive because it's very wet, low lying. Uh, but it would, there was previously a dam on Nipple Lake there and that's where they would, um, that's where they would kind of stage from, or cutting ice. Uh, so they cut ice off the lake and you can still kind of see some of the, um, um, the artifacts from their process. But in speaking with the Chair of the Lands Committee, uh, one of the reasons that he was supportive of, um, going this direction where it would be attached to the larger parcel, um, is because he felt like that historical significance would have a better opportunity of being preserved that way than if the town sold it or sold it to somebody else. So just add that.
Right. And there are more trees there.
Uh, so we're willing to purchase the two above reference lots for 2,000, 1,000 each to merge with our abutting tree farm. Neither lot can be developed, which the Lands Committee agrees with. Um, there's a lot that goes into that. So I wouldn't say that's for certain, but, um, they agree with that. Note, due to wetlands and a brook, so have no development value. They have, uh, they do have buffering value to Nipple Lake. Our intention would be to add them to our tree farm, which is in current use. Thus, we are offering current use value for the lots.
Sounds like a damn tree.
Yeah. So I don't know. I don't have that. Um, I'd like to make a motion. I don't have all the verbiage and programs.
For the sale of map 111 lots 10 and 111 lots 11 for the sum total of a thousand dollars each for a lot to Linda Brushel and James Corcoran.
Perfect. Sharp as a tack.
Okay. It's medium that's safe.
Sakosha.
Map I. Congratulations to Linda and James.
And so the last part of this agenda topic is just the sale process. I wanted to make sure the select board was aware ahead of time. Some of you have been through this process a few times. Um, right now, we're going to start the 4114A process for the sale of these lots and some of the others, um, that, uh, the select board authorized to go to other organizations. It's unclear, you know, there is a lot down by, or two lots down by the boat launch that we're in conversation with Fish and Game on. It's unclear if that's final, uh, but nothing stops us from going through the authorization process. So there'll be a few lots that will go through this process on, uh, and we may not ultimately end up selling. Uh, but being prepared and doing the process all at once makes sense because you see, uh, it's a six step process and it takes a heck of a lot of time and work. So on September 15th, the notice will be published. It'll go to the Planning Board on September 21st, September 23rd to the Conservation Commission. The select board will hold a hearing on October 4th, another hearing on October 18th, and followed by a vote on November 1st. Uh, and so this process is prescribed by statute in order to have full transparency uh, when the select board plays in the real estate game, buying or selling properties. So.
It's a game I don't, that I prefer the select board gets to stay out of.
Hey, that's why we try to, and, and the Lands Committee, to their credit, has been doing a great job offloading all these properties the town's held on to for years, uh, because of the headaches involved in getting rid of them. So we're making good progress.
Select personnel.
And Lance, we have been working with conservation and stuff and all the other headaches.
Good to hear.
Absolutely.
2021 partial statistic, statistical update. The piece everyone has been waiting for.
Yeah. So I, I will try to be quick, but I also want to be a little bit thorough because this is something that's going to be, um, a, a topic of great discussion in the public sphere. So the more folks, um, can understand the details, understand, understand where to find additional information, the better. Um, so as you know, we've talked about for almost a year now, the town's, uh, values, uh, determined by the real estate market have continued to rise. Um, by Department of Revenue Administration requirements, our assessed value needs to stay within a plus or minus 10% window of what the sale prices are. Um, every year we calculate an equalized ratio, which compares our sale prices to our assessed values. In 2019, um, we had to make a correction. We brought values up an average of 12 and a half percent and that brought us to an equalized ratio of about 97%. Um, so within that target that we're looking for. So the real estate market has continued, um, in the upward direction in our area. And so our assessor let us know last year that this is something that we'd need to do this year. The, the need, if you will, uh, is derived from, on the sheet that you have, if you look at the, um, fourth, the fifth column over, the median ratio, if not completed. So if we didn't adjust any values, the equalized ratio in Barrington would be 75%. Um, just to give you an idea of how much values have moved since just 2019, when we adjusted values the last time. And a common misconception that folks, uh, or maybe two common misconceptions, people assume that when assessed values go up, their taxes go up, um, which is very much not the case. Values will rise an average of 20% in Barrington. The tax rate will fall probably 18%. Um, so I expect the tax rate when it's set in October to be, um, somewhere between, somewhere north or south of $18.50 a thousand. And so some people's taxes will go up, some people's taxes might go down because we're just talking averages. But just because people's values are going up, the town isn't collecting any more taxes. And most importantly, the town's only collecting enough taxes to pay for what voters approved in March. And so for folks that are concerned about whatever direction their taxes are going, they can all be encouraged to vote in March because that's when the decision is made, how much money needs to be raised. So grass tax, like I said, values are rising an average of 20%. The details in the memo, which are also available online, um, at barrington.nh.gov/2021reval. Um, that has all this information, um, that I discussed, um, the all 145 properties that sold that were evaluated to determine how values needed to change. Each one of those properties is listed, um, with their evaluation. And so the, um, the NS1, which is our total assessed value, which you have a copy of our 2020 and our 2021 NS1, show that value and the value change. So in 2020, the total assessed value in town, um, was right about at 1.1 billion dollars. After the valuation, uh, in the rock, in the increase of 20%, uh, the assessed value is 1.3 billion. Uh, more specifically, 1.364 billion. Um, so 1,364 million. And so, uh, it's really very simple. You take, uh, what the, what the tax rate is, you take what the voters approved for appropriations, you subtract out any other revenue sources like motor vehicle, um, registration fees, the school gets money from the state, federal government, and then you divide that by how much assessed value there is in town. So if values go up 20%, the tax rate's going to come down. Um, and so we'll know in October what that tax rate's going to be.
If we do it right, it comes down 20%.
Right. Um, and, and I, I estimate right now it'll be about 18%. So you'll remember that the select board, uh, proposed and the voters approved a budget and appropriations, um, estimated to have no impact on the tax rate. So I expect the town side of the tax rate to drop the full 20%. Um, the county and the school did have modest increases. Um, I've, I've seen some of the revenue numbers from the school, which are promising. I think, um, they will have, um, some offsetting revenue that will eat into that increase a little bit. Um, but do I, I do expect taxes to go up a little bit, um, and, and I estimate about 2%. But we'll see the town side of the tax rate come down the full 20%. It was 369 and in 2020 and I expect it to be, um, the 20% less than that. Genius is up there. So, uh, one important point I also want to make for the community's benefit, and like I said, this is available online also. Here's our guy. So the, um, if somebody, when they receive their second half tax bill and they see that their assessed value has changed, uh, I encourage everybody to go online and, uh, pull a copy of their assessment card. Go to the, um, assessing office, ask for a copy of the assessing card, um, and review it for any mistakes or inconsistencies. Um, bring those to the town's attention. We'll welcome an opportunity to have that conversation. Um, and generally, if they disagree, staff is more than happy to help them through the process of filing for an abatement, um, which must be done by March 15th. Um, and, uh, the, the last point is the town has very generous exemptions and credits available to residents. Um, we made some adjustments to our elderly exemption two years ago, uh, to make that even more generous. Um, we have veteran credits, uh, we have disability exemptions, blind exemptions, um, solar exemptions. So, um, folks should really pay attention to what's available to them. If they're having a hard time with their taxes, uh, they may be, they may qualify for an exemption or credit, uh, that they don't know about, which might help. Um, and in, inside this MS1 document, the total assessed value, you'll see the, the updated information about where our exemptions and credits are. Uh, they haven't increased a tremendous amount, but there, there were some increases. So, uh, that's my spiel. I'm happy to answer any questions, but most importantly, send folks my way or the town's way. If they have questions that you can't answer or they can't find online.
A fair amount of money that's exempt.
There is.
Any other questions? Public safety building parking lot overlay? Gearing, no further questions. So I'm just moving. Do you want to comment Dan on the public safety building overlay?
Um, yes, I support it. We need, this is my personal thoughts, but, um, we need to budget more money. We need to, uh, overlays next year if you're caught up. We don't lose our investments up. So this takes away.
One more overlay to do.
Right. But still, um, it needs to be cleaned up down there. I noticed you drove the parking lot, one of the things here and, um, the apron's not backed up. So. You know, it's basically, we do a lot of.
It's about $35,000 to repave it and I believe we're like 60,000 under what we anticipated or 55,000 under what we anticipated.
The select board authorized up to 800. Yep. So we have money available.
Select person Sakosha.
My, uh, my thing here, and I think we have some good people in the crowd, um, but before this overlay happens. Right. I want to make sure that we have the appropriate conduits in for, uh, the future generator. It's going to be purchased and the, the generator that we have now. Um, because it doesn't make sense to overlay the parking lot in my eyes if we go to trench and add conduits if we're getting a bigger generator.
I believe this is in place.
Yeah. So like I said, I haven't opened up the generator. That's, that's why I figured you guys were here.
This is a computer, right?
Correct.
There's no Monday night football on that one.
Comments are limited to three minutes.
Your time started when you got out of your chair too.
You don't have to unmute yourself. You mute it back up. Your microphone's on the corner there.
So yeah, the answer to your question is yes. Uh, when Paul Sanders, when we, when they swamped the propane, uh, the building over in propane, they put the appropriate, uh, plumbing in and I, they put an extra, there's either one or two extra sleeves there. Um, and to, uh, assuming that the generator that's going to get a water group of propane, they'll just, uh, propane's right there. Get one in the door. So tie it to it. So I, I don't see any reason to dig any trenches across the park.
Did you run one out to the garage too?
Uh, yeah, because power went out to the garage. The garage is powered back up. So there was, yeah, conduit.
And is Paul Sanders the electrician that did the generator before?
No, no. Paul Sanders was the facilities manager at the time that the, uh.
He was the school.
School facilities manager that, at the time that the boilers was swapped over to propane.
Gotcha. Do you know what size they're?
What's that?
You know what size the conduits are by chance?
Uh, off the top of my head, I think it probably, I don't.
That's what you guys get that electrical grease for is to get all that wire through that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we'll, we'll make sure to take a look and make sure.
Oh, is, can I ask, is Wayne here?
The genera- the generator.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I thought it was.
The generator sits on, on the lawn right directly behind the building. So it, there's no impact if any trenches had to be dug.
Yeah.
It wouldn't, it would not be impact. The pavement would be impacted.
It was just all that snow comes off the roof.
Yeah, I would just, I would just probably, probably verify like, like we said, you know, and I know there's conduits in there, but you know, if we end up going with a bigger generator, um, and then there's also verbiage in there, you know, and if you have emergency power in there and stuff like that, then those conduits need to be separated into a different part of the cabinet. There, there's some stuff that goes into it. So I think before the overlay gets my vote, um, I would just, I know we have conduits, but I, I'm not going to be that guy to sit here and say, okay.
But, but what I'm saying is, is that there would be, there should be no reason to have to put any more conduits under the ground because the propane is sleeved underneath there, the propane tank to the, uh, building for, for the furnaces. And the, um, there is a sleeve to put what little bit of power is needed over in the little garage is already there. So any, any, if there had to be any wiring added because of the new generator, it would be strictly the pad, the generator sits directly behind the back of the.
Hey, I'm, I'm familiar with the location on it. It's just, if it goes bigger or stuff, that's why, you know, if we have a plan in motion, because I came back to you like, I don't know, I want to say like three months ago and I go, hey, here's what you do. Um, and then, and then bringing it to us, but now we're here. But, you know, if we can get confirmation, whether it's from Bob Salisbury, who we use quite often for our town's work, um, that he can go in and say, hey, yeah, there's, there's three four inch conduits there. So if we go with a three phase generator to back up this building, uh, it should be good, but you're not going to have access to, you know, uh, emergency power. There's.
So if you see that.
Oh, no, trenching.
Right. It's going to feed directly into the building from there.
Beautiful. That's how I understand. Okay.
Sorry, I didn't.
As I was.
Sorry.
Select personnel.
And at the time when they did the buildings up, they put at least a three or four in there. Then on the top of the building, I believe they just added that one for drainage. For, for future uses.
Yeah. I mean, so I'd be, they would just have to go onto the dirt and then come up into the building. You know, to get out and around. So which, which could cost us more money to, to put up in, into the building. So. I had, you know, that, that's my personal opinion on it. Um, you know, we know they're going to need a bigger generator. There's, this change is coming. So.
Select personnel.
I'll make the motion favor.
Make, go for it.
I would do.
Get a, get a wrap, tie a string to it.
There you go. Just that easy, right? There you go. Just that easy, right?
I'm looking for a motion for the public safety building parking lot overlay. So there's a motion from select person there, a second from select person Mancheck. Roll call vote.
There I.
Let's go to the.
NAP I. Passes three to. Three to one. New business, police and school traffic control. And I will invite our chief up to discuss.
It's just the camera. You know how to run a camera on teams. Just hit video on. Don't do anything with the microphone.
So what are you saying about our fire chief here?
I didn't say anything. It's what I didn't say that you're worried about.
All right.
So this is totally just a discussion. If anybody's paid attention, media, this has become a topic. Traffic at all schools is worse right now because the driver situation with the school buses.
Would you like me to drive around, take some pictures for you?
Don't need to see him. Factually, I've told the SAU, I've told administration, it will help if we can. As much as I want to help, I can't right now. So basically, this is me getting in front of the board and saying, I understand the problems. I'd love to be able to help. Love to be able to help the community. I don't have the manpower right now. Scott Young tomorrow is the only person on duty at the point when the middle school is dropping. I'll be around basically just as the middle school is dropping. I don't have it if something's going on. So this is a good point, I guess, for discussion for you folks. Just Sakosha mentioned the SIRO combination the last time. Those are for powers above the chief of police's head, I think, to be having that discussion. That seems like a school board slash SAU to VOS slash TA conversation. I'm happy to engage in that conversation as well. If you gentlemen have direction or directive for me, happy to listen to it.
Select person, air.
We, the discussion that needs to go on, I'm gonna bring up later on with a little item coming up on the wall. It's up, I don't support this, this staff unless the vision and the rights has been made, so. Because it is not balancing out this thing, I I believe.
Are referring to us providing all this additional funding for school related items?
And then it might work out in the past, but I've always voted no. Because my understanding is illegal. Two separate budgets. Not so that it defines them. That's my ground I'm planning on.
Select person, Sakosha.
To kind of touch on what chief brought up, I had talked to him about maybe convoing a school resource officer. So he could, or or she could deal with the day to day of the school, be the be the friendly face. Obviously, when issues come up, they're there, but also there to do traffic detail. As electrician, I've worked in a lot of the school districts throughout the whole state. That's normally the combination that I see. Could be beneficial to the school and then when the school's not available, you know, it all the budget stuff can be worked out, but it has to be, as Dan said, if it's church and state separated, then I'm sure he could go work for the PD part time. And and we could work something out. I don't know.
And and again, I don't know. This is above my pay grade, so I'll throw it out. I I don't know what the situation looks like as far as that school town crossover. I have X in my overtime budget. I'm going to go over X, as you gentlemen know, in my overtime budget this year. If the simple solution is the school doesn't want to see a school resource officer, and they may not, yet they want traffic control, then X needs to grow by Y for me to be able to provide that coverage. And again, if the school wants this service, as far as I'm concerned, the school is responsible for Y. But again, that's outside of my.
Select person, air.
Sir Chris, did you go through Connor? Will you be talking to the chief?
For.
When you talk all this stuff, ideas that you go through Connor?
He grabbed me after selectmen's meeting, actually.
Yeah, we were walking out because it was kind of on the topic of, I think it had come up then too, so just in relation, so.
Well, my understanding is you go through the chair and the town administrator, our corn foot.
Chair NAP, if I could, add some commentary to the topic here. So prior to Chief Joy, Chief Williams and I had had some conversations about the progress that he had made in conversations with the school. So as Chief Joy alluded to, this isn't a new problem. Might be compounded a little bit by the increased ridership with parents, school bus issues, whatnot, COVID or otherwise.
New properties you just have in town?
It's an excellent point too, yeah. Yeah, very much compounded, so.
Tax on the system.
Yeah, so so Chief Williams had, I think, made a lot of progress in conversations with the school, the superintendent, and a couple of conversations with the school board. And the general framework that they were discussing regarding a school resource officer was a 50 50 cost shared position where their primary responsibility during the school year and school day would be at the school, traffic control otherwise. And then Chief Williams would have that officer through the summer and nights and weekends as schedule allowed, cover details, overtime shifts, anything else. And so that was the general framework. I mentioned it in my report, and I think Chief Joy would would agree. But at the time, the school made the decision that what they needed more to to do their job in the schools, which is their job to figure out how to do, but they needed more counseling staff. And so the approach that that they took to the budget development and whatnot was to ask for additional counseling staff, which they did and they received. And by all measures, that's been a productive addition for them. And so, you know, I I will also take the opportunity, as I do most times, we talk about it, to take issue with the point that select person air made. I think that the shared services between the town and the school is what's best for the Barrington taxpayers, which pay both bills. There's one pocketbook, the more that the town and the school can do to work together and save each other money, whether it's through time, energy, or hard dollars, the better it is for the Barrington taxpayer. And so I understand that the perception sometimes might be that the balance is out of whack, that the town does more for the school. I know there's people that believe that the the school does more for the town. And at the end of the day, I care a lot less about where the the scales fall on that balance than that every piece of shared services is introduces efficiency into how the town and the school operate. So that's my, my, my.
I understand your position, your opinion. I guess the question is, is there something we're looking to address on it or is this just informational?
For me, this was informational, which is what I brought up to the TA. I just wanted everybody on the same page. I wanted to get in front of the community so that they know I'm I'm not unaware of the situation, not oblivious to it. I get it. I understand it. I don't like it any more than they do.
And I guess the one thing, the one or two things that we would ask the select board, one, do you agree with those operational decisions that that chief is looking at his overtime line, looking at his staffing shortages? We're making the decision to prioritize policing and patrol over school traffic control. So to make sure that that we're hitching horses on that. And number two, is there something that you'd like us to do to work on this ongoing issue of a lack of traffic control? Do you want to want us to start working with the school department, talking about a school resource officer? That conversations from a couple of years ago. So direction in that way would be beneficial also.
So let me work down the line here, starting on the other end where select person Mancheck had his head up, hand up, I like select person Sakosha say something and then I would like to comment on.
Based on our last meeting, I I mentioned at school board meeting Tuesday, that we would certainly consider they might want to think about a resource officer. They kind of looked at me like, oh, this is an interesting idea. But would that person actually be in the school? That was the question they had for me and I suggested that they talk to Connor.
Love to have that discussion.
So I I raised that issue based on our conversation last last meeting.
Select person Sakosha.
So kind of touch on what Connor said and the the shared services. And I just had to take a quick second and really just stick it over. But let's be honest, okay, school is September to June 5, something like that. That guy's going to have 40 hours plus a week just dealing with school, the incidents, being in school, being involved. So if the school hired, you know, maybe one or two officers that could split up the duties and then you have to go over to the station, you know. Otherwise, I I think it's a pipe dream, thinking that we're going to get the school resource officer to go in and to work a steady schedule. That that just seems doubtful in my mind, minus the two months that or the the few months and weeks that we have off. Maybe that's a good alternate for then. This is my opinion.
So my commentary on it is a school resource officer is one aspect of it. But that doesn't solve both the Route 9 and the Route 125 problem. And one officer is not going to be able to do it. The conversation needs to be had around how you actually flow traffic in and around those buildings. That's the conversation that needs to be had with regard to traffic. As well as their lining up, parking dismissal, pick your hoopla on it that people are complaining about, whether they're parking on this road out here, if they're parking out on Malago, if they're parking up by the middle school, like they've got to address those issues. But it's the school board, the school board has to make the decision to 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 address the traffic in and out of their buildings. The resource officers are really a separate component of that. Select person, air first thing.
Yeah, well, clarify earlier, the discussion, that's right, I agree with them. I don't have brief on it. These happen. And then two, I've asked data about this beneficial for the town. We have no record about sand salt, fuel, all things are bad and stuff. And my ones up, there's no data that exists. How do I, how do you say the best deal for the town?
That's a, you're, you're, we're talking about the price of tea in China and you're in Europe right now.
I'm all.
Like, right now, we're talking about about the issue related to traffic flow in and out of the school.
That's right, discussion. I agree. Figure something out.
So when, and I wasn't involved with the building of the the middle school or the elementary school. But usually, you know, there's engineers behind that. And the school also provides transportation for the children at the school. And when I was in school, getting picked up from your parent, that was like, okay, doctors, visits, sports. Wasn't an everyday thing and we rode the bus. So I don't know if more kids are just, you know, parents on the run. But you know, there there's obvious engineering that went behind the the theory of where buses pull up and pull out.
I walk the store. I go to the bus, I walk.
All right. Is there, is there an action that we're looking to have made out of this or a discussion that we would like to put before the school board? My recommendation is to ask them to investigate how they deal with their traffic issues. And I, and I don't, and I don't believe in officer is the answer because people get sick, people get COVID, people move on. There will always be a shortage. That's a, the resource officer is really for a different purpose than to control traffic. Dealing with the traffic problem is an engineering issue. If we're really going to look at a transportation, people moving, engineering. Roundabouts may suggest roundabouts. But if we can teach them how to drive in the Lee roundabout, then we've got this covered. Select person, air.
Back down.
Oh, you can stand up. I I got a phone call. Teachers were out there stopping traffic. So I called the police, they responded very quickly to it and said directed issue.
Well, yeah, well, that's not, I don't want the teachers.
So I I have traffic. I'll speak to that. Yeah, we had not only staff directing traffic, but individuals that are not even employed by the town or the SAU. That's a recipe for disaster. And and thankfully, we had that discussion and that I I am certain that that's not going to happen anymore. But yeah, that that's a recipe for problems.
The police responded very quickly, my fault.
I mean, with the exception of the middle school, they really have a way to move people out of that school that doesn't involve funneling everybody out onto 125. It's just they have to utilize that and open the gate and direct folks out that way.
And it is. And right now, it's a matter of backup, coming out through trying to get in onto 125, the same on Route 9. Due to the bus shortage, there's, and again, I don't want to say twice, I don't want to say three times, much, much, much more individual traffic than buses that have been there in the past. And we lost two more bus drivers right now. I believe I'm speaking out of turn, but my my recollection was two more bus drivers have been non-existent. So it's going to get worse by that much.
So not only just to to highlight the the whole traffic duty thing for the resource officer, but back a couple of months ago, you know, we had an issue at a planning board meeting where one of our volunteers that, you know, donates time to, our school board actually, you know, helped that. So I mean, and you know, we've gotten bigger and I think, you know, it's not just a traffic thing that will go into the resource officer for this.
I agree. I just think the resource officer is a better, is a better discussion for the purpose of a resource officer.
Yes.
Select person, Mancheck.
I would suggest perhaps you get the band, Lewis and probably Chief Joy as well. And sit down and have that discussion with them and explain to them that we don't have the resources to provide that for them. I don't know if they understand that. I'd be happy to raise that in my school board meeting, but.
Will you reach, reach out to Dan and
I will.
Communicate the message. If you would like to sit and have a discussion on it, I will gladly meet with him and the chair if need be to talk about their and the police chief to talk about their traffic issues and appropriate ways for them to look at handling them.
Great.
Because I honestly believe just by redirecting traffic, they could probably address a good portion of the concerns.
Headline is the town's aware, the police department's aware of the issue. It's not simply digging or, thank you.
Thought we were done.
I I've, I recall some of the other towns that offset this hours. Yeah, students start, it's up to school day. So I I will go and find out what makes it work.
Thank you, Dan. Transfer station and recycling center improvements. Capital reserve.
Select person Mancheck was pointing to the public. It's not public comment, but you're certainly welcome to address a member of the public if you'd like, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was here because of the coffee sale.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So it's, you know, apparently my parents know, I had bitter on it. Will I be getting contacted too?
Yes, sir.
All right. Very good.
Thank you and congratulations.
Okay, yes, so the transfer station. And I see that Aaron Paradise is on this, the, while she unmutes herself. The purpose of this item before the board tonight is just so you have a little bit of background as we go into the budget season. And we'll discuss it again during the transfer station budget. This memo is in your budget binder in the transfer station section. But I wanted to provide a copy of you, a copy of it for you here right now. But I'll let Aaron explain kind of what we're proposing and what the reason is. Brief update on the progress of the committee.
Good evening. So as you know, the, well, the transfer station review committee and myself have invested much time and energy understanding the current facility operations and constraints that we've had. While we've recognized While we've recognized some of the smaller deficiencies that we believe are, you know, we do have some big ones, which will ultimately be costly, costly and, you know, will be a lengthy process to really, I guess, you know, determine what we can do within the facility and then, you know, the timeframe on when we can do some of these things. As you know, we are increasing as a population in Barrington. So with that, you know, the number of residents that are utilizing the facility are increasing and along comes with the increased volume of material. You know, we really are trying to focus on waste reduction efforts on our end. But ultimately, we really need to start thinking long term. Um I know some of the major deficiencies that we've kind of talked about are the traffic flow and, you know, ultimately, what does that mean within the facility? And those are the things that we are trying to focus on within the committee at this point, one, now that we've, you know, recognized the smaller deficiencies and corrected them. Again, I'll, you know, with the new fee schedule, um the extended weekday hours, you know, improving our signage and and really focusing on the education piece for residents. So quickly, you know, some of the stuff that we've recognized is the limited space in parking. You know, and and do we, how we make that beneficial for the town? You know, we've looked at the possibility of moving some of the buildings, which in itself will be costly. I don't have numbers in, you know, cause this is still in its early stages of planning. And that's why we're looking at doing the capital reserve. So we can think long term at this point.
Person there.
And like Jim just earlier, I like thinking out of the box and stuff. I know we're paving the apron going in there, but I feel I've gone doing everything in there, future use and stuff like that. And I, it's cunning, I'd sit down with Connor, look at a plan. And then when, with the, uh, with the figures in later on, it works out and on, I'm gonna sit down with Connor in the backseat. When I do new jobs, I do by the job and I give what the site, what the site tells me what to do. Get water to flow and stuff. On E C G, not today, but I'm really good at putting it on and have good use. So I wouldn't mind sitting around and drop Connor for what we would like.
Connor, um a lot of what Dean said was cut out on my end.
Okay, um Dan was just talking more bigger picture about when we do plan to make some adjustments to the flow, um that he was offering up his experience to take a look at what the plans were. And so I think a a great way to do that, yeah, well, I think, you know, you could definitely, um once they start figuring out some specifics uh at the committee, you could attend a transfer station committee and and talk about it with them. But to Aaron's point, we're a little farther away from that. And so I think the the primary purpose is we know, I mean, just paving that that yard will cost tens of thousands of dollars. And so starting to set some money aside now, um we felt like was an appropriate way to lessen the blow when we, when we do have some specific plans to bring before the voters. So.
The broader upon it was, uh, what to pay the apron.
Can I just speak on, I know that we are paving the apron, but that entrance has caused us a lot of, I'd say, time and and energy spent and material from the highway department because of the drainage issue that we're having over there with the runoff that comes down. And with all the traffic that constantly comes in, especially on a Saturday, it ruts it up. And I don't know, you, I pity the people who are in cars that have to come in after that's been rutted up. So I know it's kind of a a Band-Aid, as you would say, but you know, this will eliminate some of that problem. And then, you know, it also helps us with being able to plow the snow, um you know, and we are re- we are redoing the gate. So, you know, that helps eliminate that angle coming in a little bit for some of that stuff.
Select person, Sakosha.
No, I'm not uh super familiar with the transfer station, so forgive me if my my questions are not not as good as they should be. Um but I was approached actually by a couple of different gentlemen that used to go down and take TVs out of the aisles or whatever, um or snow blowers or um stuff that people would leave, Aaron. Is, and I don't think they're able to do that now. You know, that that could help eliminate some of the waste, um you know, cause these guys, you know, you have the older guys in town that are are pickers and tinkerers and, you know, sometimes that's all the, that's unfortunately, um one thing that they can afford to do is to to go to the dump and to to pick something out of it, go home and fix it, to have it or to to give it to somebody.
I'm the first person to appreciate being able to reuse something. And we, we, really, there was supposed to be a no picking throughout. It just was not enforced. And then it got out of control. When we had COVID, we wanted people to do their business and and move on and not have people congregate in certain areas. And this was part of the issue we were having with traffic backing up. You couldn't see what was being um put into the metal container. We were having more orphan trash come in. So once traffic moved away, things would appear that people weren't paying for. Ultimately, I think what's happening with some of the electronics stuff is we get commodities, commodities off of our bill. So, you know, we are really watching what is going in and what we can do to offset a lot of our things. And I know a bigger conversation kind of down the road is going to be the metal container. And I think, you know, right now, we can't just let, it's, it's all or none. Uh basically how it is, because how can you limit it only to a certain couple people when, you know, you're gonna have six other people coming in saying, hey, we wanna do that. Um you know, go ahead.
I I didn't say it was just, just for these, you know, a couple particular gentlemen. It was just, it was to bring up in general conversation, um to to reply, say it's backing up traffic. My next solution would to be to pitch, okay, um is there, is there an hour or two that uh I could dedicate to go down on a a Sunday?
To the town, you know, if we have people crawling in those containers, which I have caught so many people in the middle of metal containers. And then you have people who don't know that there are people in there and they're throwing stuff over the edge even when you say not to. So it's a, it's a big liability that, you know, I would not, I, I, go ahead.
No, I'm gonna, I'd I'd like to kill conversation on this, cause the purpose of this discussion right now is around transfer station recycling center improvements capital reserve. And we're going down operations, which is not the focus of this conversation.
I apologize.
So I'd like to bring it back to the focus of the conversation around the capital reserve, the idea of a capital reserve. How does the board feel about the idea of establishing a capital reserve for the transfer station and recycling aspect? Select person.
I agree with, I do not use facilities, but it does not flow right and it didn't, approval needs to be done and it's gonna take cost of money.
Thank you. Select person, Mantrick.
Well, I kind of echo what Dan just said, but I think it is going to be expensive and it's gonna come over time. And I think it's time now to start thinking about a a reserve. We can discuss the details of that, but I think it's a wise thing to do because it's gonna cost us money.
Yep. Is that, is there unified consensus that we support the idea of establishing a capital reserve for?
Have a seat.
Thank you.
Great. And like I said, there'll be more conversation, but glad to have that out of the way. So when the budget does come up, we don't have to have this conversation. We can focus on.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you very much.
Recreation events, um and alcohol on town property. Dan, you wanted to discuss this. You had something you wanted to discuss, not related to the alcohol, you said?
Right. I wanna thank the rec, picking out of the box and stuff. Small businesses and the people don't know about, have bugs and stuff. They could have a display there. If people know what they do. Some people in town don't, you know, even that, but establishes in business. And there's other places and stuff, even like Jim.
Yeah, yeah, we do. We set up our own events.
Or other small business, and that may be good for small businesses and stuff and clients as well. But they're changing their venue from trunk or treat or something else. I think we have a saying it and I support, I just wanna make this time. I support the reference. Me personally, they have my vote.
Solar electric fence around the schoolyard, keep the kids in.
I didn't say it. I'd like to have a comment.
All right, um is there anything else, any other discussion here we did on this topic? Hearing none, moving on, the tricentennial in twenty twenty-one town report. Three minutes.
Thank you. Um I'm here representing the uh representing the uh.
Here's I'm here. I still have my ornament, my truck, ready to go on my Christmas tree this year.
Last year's or this year's?
Last year's.
I apologize, I, the number plates came in, you're there, is actually gonna bring one in, uh, I can't even go to the corners off until I see one in there.
We'll steal right out of there.
I mean, he left with a Jefferson or an An Jackson. He left with a Jackson.
I was gonna say, what, you two, to like talk it out and he won?
That's how all of our conversations go. For the record, I want that in the minute.
So I'm here tonight to ask you, um as we, the committee talked about whether or not we would wanna take and put a big splash in the twenty, what would be the twenty twenty-one town report that comes out in early twenty-two. If we wanted to wait a year, and the consensus was we wanna do it this year. So what I'm here to ask you folks tonight is, is that to more or less, for lack of a different way of putting it, allow the the anniversary committee to overtake the town report. We would like to, uh, our, our goal is to have a hem, heavy emphasis on the town's anniversary. And we wanna put uh the pictures that they're always asking for. We want old pictures. So people could have the book more as a, uh, as well as a town report. It would be a historical uh thing. One of the things, um, we found a bunch of pictures at the historical society that show Norman Berry, uh, and one of his guys standing on a bee flower with a lot of snow. That would be the kind of picture that we would encourage the highway department to put in around their stuff.
So how much you ask?
I I talked into Tiffany earlier, that's, that's her thing. I talked to her earlier. I don't think it's gonna be a lot of money. But we would, we would, we're just looking to your blessing to allow us to, you know, maybe the book would be fifteen to twenty pages thicker. But have an emphasis on the three hundredth anniversary.
Personally, I fully support it.
I, I support, I have comment.
Go ahead.
Well, for your conversations, I, I think you are on top of, you know, beginning of the town report, dedicating to the tricentennial.
Yeah, we want, we'd like to, one of the things we want is, is we get a schedule, we should have a lot of the stuff nailed down uh for next year by the time the printing has to be done. So, you know, maybe on the back page or somewhere conveniently people will see that we have kind of a tentative schedule for the uh three hundredth anniversary and uh just as a little side note, nineteen seventy-two, the town of Barrington built the uh, their second town hall, which is where the library rect apartment is now. Uh, they paid a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for that building, which is a lot of money. Uh, and the, and the town was relatively proud of that. And and here we are in, all things being equal, things work both the way we hope. In twenty twenty-two, the afternoon anniversary, we'll dedicate our new town hall exactly fifty years later. So we're kind of excited about that. We have pictures, Connor has a picture that we found of the Green Hill Bridge, means that's gonna be replaced next year. It was a one-lane wooden bridge in around nineteen forty-five and it had a center pillar, it had a granite pillar in the center of it, which is no longer there. So those are the kind of things that we're hoping to incorporate in the town report. So in as much as it'll be a town reporter, also have a little bit of historical significance if we have your blessing.
I support it. Blessing.
And brass tacks, Tiffany actually did the legwork today. Um the additional pages would be about a hundred and fifteen dollars just for full transparency.
It's a no-brainer. Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing, Rick. School facilities, lawnmower purchase.
So I appreciate very much the chair's intent to keep topics topical. And I think this is one that could very easily steer off into other directions about the shared services and what.
Talking about a lawnmower.
Yeah, but we're talking about a lawnmower. And so uh just very specifically, the school department uh provides landscaping services at no cost um to the library, recreation, um the capped capped landfill at the transfer station. Um I already said the town hall, safety building. They provide that landscaping, so weed eating, mowing. Um for a contract of ten thousand dollars, the cemetery trustees have a contract with the school department to mow the cemetery. So there's ten thousand dollars exchanged hands for those services. So the school department unfortunately lost a piece of equipment, one of their zero steer mowers a a few weeks ago and is in the process of purchasing a new one. As part of that process, the school facility manager asked if the town would be willing to contribute to the purchase of a new mower. I, you know, as I did previously, I shared, I I don't expect it because the select board has previously not supported the sharing of funds. Uh, you know, we do things for one another and also without a formalized shared services agreement. Uh, I offered that, um and it wasn't really my place, so don't mean to step on the cemetery trustees toes. Uh, but I offered that the town, if they send us an invoice, the town uh would pay the ten thousand dollars as soon as they sent us an invoice, if that money would help them in the purchase of a, a new piece of equipment. And I asked if he had some amount in mind for the town to contribute. He said five thousand dollars. So um the the question to the select board is, um are you interested or willing uh to find uh five thousand dollars in the current year budget uh to help the school buy a mower to replace one of theirs that broke down?
Select person, Sakosha.
Who, who says that it needed to be replaced? If we bring this to a dealership and have them go through it and go, hey, it's got a blown head gasket or it's got a.
Yeah, I trust, um Jim told the school facility manager, he did say the only details he provided is that the engine seized up and it was unreparable. Uh, but I I trust Jim if if the, he's.
Oh, no, no, I wasn't in there, so.
No, I know, yeah, but good question.
Select person, Eric.
No, engines are cheap. I'm willing to sell them free TVs a little.
My, my general sense is they have an operating budget. I'm sure they can muster the money, like, just like we do within our budget for stuff. We don't come back for the school and ask them to pay for our things. I mean, it's, we are an SB two town. We approve all of it. And as long as we come in on budget, that shouldn't be a big deal. So I mean, I, 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 I'm in support of our shared services model that we do not have an agreement on. But we've asked them about, about updating and coming to an agreement and they have been reluctant to do it and say, no, it works as is. So my general feeling is this works as is. And I'm okay leaving it as such. Would you please uh vote before?
I just know.
I'm going with Dan.
I would have to say no as well. Um also, before you guys pull a trigger on a new lawnmower, like Dan said, uh a motor might be cheaper because those units aren't cheap to buy as a whole.
And I also am not in support of spending five thousand. And I also am, uh, not in support of spending five thousand dollars to school board for a mower.
Understood. Appreciate it.
Select persons reports. We'll start with select person Mantrick.
Yes, um. Excuse me. I attended the school, school board meeting. Um, their enrollment is up fairly significantly. Stepwise, they did vote to have a two-week mask mandate. Be reconsidered at their next meeting. Uh, they have a, a, they, they put out a, those don't read it regularly. They have a, a disaster plan. And I think it's a probably a pretty reasonable thing that would be considered on a recurring basis. So they have significant increase and they've had significant increase and probably more importantly is uh, kindergarten last year had ninety-nine people this year have a hundred and eleven. So kind of looking at future projections for percent increase. Yeah, we're looking. Everyone's headed in this, the school population is going up. Uh, the uh, advisor budget committee had their first organizational meeting that turned into a little more than an organizational meeting and they have questions for uh, both the police chief and the fire chief about why they need uh, they would need additional people. We'll see what that turns out. That meeting.
It's my fault meeting.
Yeah. You bet.
Yep, September twenty-first.
Yeah, that's, I couldn't remember the, and the, uh, transfer committee needs Monday. Probably discuss what we discussed.
Thank you. Select person there?
Um, I, you see town lands, I mean, working hard and stuff. We haven't met in a while, but, um, and then the, um, uh, corner was updated about the forestry and stuff, but they're half done and it's too wet. Uh, the conditions that they will, will come back, it's dry out or freezes. But I walked down there Friday night with a resident and stuff, a very clean landing, looked into the woods, very clean. Nice operation in town. And then conservation is thick and green. And then it lists out last meeting, well, different things. Only a couple items about the transfer station, everything's open, all heat pumps and stuff like that. Um, and then is it Gary? I don't, I'm imagining it was a new all-in or new member. Yeah, I, I hasn't been before the board yet.
It's not official. There's an application that the board will see at the September twenty-seventh meeting, uh, for Gary Embry as an alternate to the Conservation Commission. He was recently appointed to the local river advisory committee. Um, so the name should be familiar to the select board, uh, but there's an alternate position open and I understand that he's interested. I received the application day before yesterday, I think.
Right, because he thought he was already a member. I said, no, I, I'm, I'm in the last home, so I'm pretty sure.
I talked with the chair about it, but I have the materials I need now and it'll be before the board the first time on the September seventh meeting.
And then Connor's been working with the chair as I've heard on different subjects that's come to our attention later on. Uh, well, another trails committee is up. Well, I'm willing to feel the person that you met who fully accepts the position.
Okay.
Um, Connor's been dealing with the chair on that. Probably have a point between the twenty-seven.
Okay. Select person's suggestion.
Keep it short, sweet about the rec. Um, gym floors are done. They look great. Um, and then also we have Tucker Treat coming up on October twenty-third. Um, and don't quote me, yeah, I'm not even going to say a time because I don't remember. Uh, Jesse's on here. She can, uh, probably say, hey, it's, uh, five o'clock. All right.
To the point about the gym floors, it does look awesome. You should take a, take a peek in. It's like a gray tan with blue accents. Um, it really, um.
Did they epoxy?
Big improvement.
Do not, uh.
They refinished the whole thing. Yep. They went down to paint. They did colors and then the epoxy, um.
Over top of the wood.
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, it's, it's an epoxy, but it's like the gym floor epoxy.
Not anymore.
Not previously.
Oh, it wasn't, it was.
No, it's concrete, concrete underneath, but it was like an epoxy finish. Jesse might be able to describe it. It's like a, it's like a, um, attack resistant epoxy.
I.
Here comes Jesse. I'm sorry, what's that?
So it has, it has the nineteen seventies tile underneath it. However, um, it is the poured, uh, the poured rubber. So it's basically the same type of material that was already on there. Um, but this one is just updated. So it was about three millimeters thick. Um, and like they were saying, it looks absolutely amazing in there. So we're excited.
You said it has a nineteen seventies tile underneath it?
It's a best.
You're very good.
That's exactly what I'm like, oh my God.
So we changed the times a little bit this year. I believe we're going to start it around, uh, two thirty. Don't quote me on that, but we're going to be advertising tomorrow. So all the information will be online.
Thank you. If you don't know, nobody knows, Jesse. Um, so.
Are, are you all set for me?
I just, I'm just making sure we're all set. Uh, planning board, I was, again, unfortunately not at the last planning board meeting, so no update there. The technology committee meeting is tomorrow. Um, I don't have anything from the building committee end since I'm not there and, uh, I would just actually like to make a shout out to the before and after school programs that the rec is running, um, from, from an experience of dropping my son off on his first day, clearly a little bit of, uh, nervousness and uh, went to, went and had a little bit of an emotional moment as we dropped him off and off we went. And, uh, a, a testament to the type of people that we have around town. Jesse sent me a picture of him like five minutes later off playing and having a good time, which I sent home to Mama Bear and she was very happy to see that as well. So thank you for all that, uh, the people of our town do and, um, the different, different organizations with before school, after school, the rec department and all of our different committees, whether the town lands committee, our conservation commission, transfer station, they're all, we wouldn't be able to do everything we do without all of them. So thank you for that. Final public comment.
So if you're participating on a computer, you can press star six to unmute yourself or you can raise your hand if you're on the Teams platform. Uh, or enter a comment in the comment box.
Give it fifteen more seconds.
Not seeing any, any movement on my end. Again, star six, if you're on your phone and looking to register a comment.
The consummate wise guy in me wanted to say, all right, in closing public comment, the moment you finished talking about how to unmute yourself.
How to do it. The how-tos. Hey, it's your meeting, you know?
All right. At this time, I will close public comments, seeing we have nobody looking to comment on anything. Um, we ha- have a non-public for personnel.
Yes, and I'd like to add reputation, please.
Okay, so personnel and reputation, motion to enter non-public for personnel and reputation.
I would like to make a motion to enter non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one dash eight, go three, two. For the pursuit of personnel and reputation.
Seconded by select man Shrek. We'll call vote.
Air I.
Man Shrek. Scotia. That much. Um, are we intending to make any announcements after that?
I don't expect to have an announcement, but we will come back to the public meeting to close out, um, to adjourn.
Okay.